So, welcome everybody. We are so happy that you have joined us. Tonight, as you know, Tuesday, October 1st is the Berkeley School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Janet Hoy and I am a member of the League of Women Voters Diablo Valley. I do not know any of the candidates in this race and I live in Contra Costa County and cannot vote in this election. As I said, I'm with the League of Women Voters and you guys may all know this, but I'm going to tell you anyway. The League has been around for over 100 years and we are a political organization that is involved in educating and informing voters and citizens about issues of interest and advocating on certain policy issues. We are strictly nonpartisan. And by that, I mean, we never ever support or opposed candidates or parties, not in the 104 years we've been around. We are, the advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as ballot measures, which we have indeed done. However, this forum is part of our 501(c)(3) organization and it is part of the education arm of the League, which does not take positions on any races like this, of course. Tonight's forum is presented in partnership with the Berkeley PTA Council, which is the gathering of PTAs across the 15 schools in the district. I'd like to remind everybody that the candidates have all agreed to participate under the ground rules set forth for this forum. These ground rules are posted in chat. Candidates are not permitted to display campaign buttons, t-shirts, sign, Zoom backgrounds, etc., in order to maintain neutrality. We are recording tonight's forum and the session will be available on our website, l w v b a e dot org and on our YouTube channel. There are indeed five candidates running for these seats. One is not with us tonight. The other four are Laura Babbitt, Jen Korn, Norma Harrison, and Anna Vasudev. So, very briefly, what does the school board do? The Berkeley Unified School District Board of Education, also called the School Board, is comprised of five elected directors, also called members, and two student directors, one chosen from Berkeley High and the other from Berkeley Technology Academy. The School Board represents the public's voice in public education, providing governance over the school district. The School Board is responsible for employing and evaluating the supervisor, adopting policies, curriculum, and the district's budget, overseeing the maintenance and development of facilities in the district, and negotiating and adopting collective bargaining agreements with the district's four unions. On your ballot, November 5th is the election. We'll talk about it a little bit at the end. On your ballot, you will be able to choose two candidates out of the four tonight, but five who are running for these seats. School Board directors are decided through a plurality vote. With a plurality vote, the candidates who receive the highest number of votes will be declared the winners. Ground rules. Now let's go over a few of the ground rules. Each candidate has two minutes for their opening remarks. The order was determined by using a random number tool. The timekeeper will signal candidates with a green-colored window, which will count down the seconds from 2 minutes to 15 seconds to go, when it will turn yellow and then red when the full 2 minutes is up. As people signed up via Zoom, they had the opportunity to submit questions. If you have additional questions that occur to you, you may type them in by clicking on the Q&amp;A icon. Our volunteers will take the questions and pass them to the moderator, or in this case, we may have some other staff from the League actually pose those questions. The order of answering the questions will be alternated with each candidate and each will have 2 minutes to respond to each question. Again, the timekeeper will signal the candidates. There will be no separate rebuttals. However, the candidates can choose on your own to use some or all of your 2 minutes to rebut the response given by another candidate. Following the questions, each candidate will have 1 minute for a closing statement. So, we're ready to get started. Let's start with the opening statement and again, that is 2 minutes each. And we are going to start with Norma.
Good evening, anybody, everybody. What I tell you is we need to end age segregation. My comments are, will, will avoid the questions and just tell you things I think about dealing with trying to take hold of schooling, take hold of education. The development of humans on Earth has brought with it the tumult, the penultimate horror, the profit system. This has broken the evolutionary earth that we people had pretty much felt accustomed to until it became what it is now, thought to be available to fracking. For example, though warned against it for decades, all destructive behaviors have been advanced. Nevertheless, it is the central problem of our lives, never to be subverted to all the other concerns it has perpetrated. So I go on to talk about the major formation, indoctrinating us to continue the horror through many efforts to push back against it having been promoted. The USSR, Cuba, China, nation after nation in Africa and South America, liberatory struggles, all countered by the main profiteer, the US hegemon. What's called education has been embodied into schools out of our social experiences. It is now a commodity. It is also called learning. We've made, we're made to accept that learning, education, and teaching pretty much grows, pretty much goes on in some classroom formation, but from about the seventh month in the womb.
Thank you, Norma. You reached the end of your time. Jen, you're up next.
Great. Thank you, Janet. My name is Jen Korn and I am proud to be running for Berkeley School Board after dedicating the past 30 years of my life to public education. I've been both a teacher and a principal in Berkeley Public Schools and I currently work as Director of School Improvement in Oakland Unified. My many years of experience in education mean that I am uniquely prepared to anticipate how the School Board's budget, program, and policy decisions will actually be implemented in schools and classrooms. I am committed to accelerating the achievement of students of color, students with disabilities, and students who are learning English, and I will work to ensure a culture of belonging in our schools and strong partnerships with families. My campaign has generated broad support across the city of Berkeley. I am the only candidate, for example, who was endorsed by the Berkeley Democratic Club, the Wellstone Democratic Renewal Club, and the Democratic Party. I have strong support from labor. These labor endorsements reflect the fact that I myself have been a union member for the past 24 years as a teacher and administrator and my dedication to considering our Berkeley educators' perspectives when making decisions and partnering with them to address the challenges in our school district. I also share endorsements from the mayor and four city council members with Director Babbitt. I am a consensus candidate. I'm receiving support from a wide spectrum of leaders and organizations all across the city of Berkeley. And finally, I'm a lesbian mom in BUSD. I helped bring family diversity curriculum, Harvey Milk Day, and Pride Month celebrations to our elementary schools. I'm endorsed by Equality California, the East Based on Well Democratic Club, and I would be honored to be a voice on the School Board for LGBTQ students and families, filling a void that has existed on our board for the past four years. When I was raising my young kids in Berkeley schools, it meant a lot to me to have an openly lesbian School Board member representing the interests of families like mine and I hope that I can now pay that forward. Thanks so much for having me this evening.
Thank you, Jen. Next is Anna.
Thank you, Janet, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for this forum. As the current Berkeley School Board President, I am honored to seek reelection with the endorsement of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers, the Berkeley Council of Classified Employees, and State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Tony Thurman, among others. During my tenure on the School Board, I've worked hard for our students in schools. I established a Berkeley Unified Safety Committee and created the position of a district-wide safety coordinator to keep our schools safe. I advanced public health by expanding COVID-19 testing in Berkeley schools and throughout the state of California. As a board liaison to the Berkeley Schools Excellence Program BSEP Committee, I believe firmly in fiscal transparency and accountability, ensuring that tax dollars are spent effectively for our students. As a parent of a student with disabilities, in my second term, I will focus on expanding support and resources for students with disability, with students for disabilities, and uplifting the voices of their families. I come to this work because I love our district and I believe that there's more work to be done to close the opportunity gap for Black and Brown students and students with disabilities. I'm the only candidate to serve on the state board. I serve on the California Latino School Board Association, a statewide board organization dedicated to ensuring Latinx students have the best educational opportunities and resources to succeed in California public schools. As the only incumbent with support from the Berkeley Federation of Teachers and the Berkeley Council of Classified Employees, I'd be honored to have your support for reelection to the Berkeley School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna, and Laura.
Yes, good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for being here this evening. Four years ago, Berkeley voters elected to the School Board on a platform of putting kids' needs first, driving equity and budget accountability. I'm proud of what we've achieved together thus far and there's more to do. As the sole financial auditor on the board, through effective engagement, oversight, and policy, my track record reflects prioritizing our children's needs while also improving educator pay and benefits an average of 30%. City collaboration, which allowed taxpayer funds of $27 million to move from a parking lot project to providing new classrooms, STEM programming, and gender-neutral bathrooms. With the focus on equity, we've closed our opportunity gap in reading K through 2 by 19.5% and improved college eligibility rates with Black and Brown students leading this increase a minimum of 45%. We've expanded our career technical programming, cultural competency training, and mental health services. I sponsored the Climate Literacy and Environmental Justice Resolution with immediate funding for implementation so that our talk could immediately match our walk. Supported the new district-wide committees to amplify parent, educator, and student voices, fostering deeper community engagement. And we've managed $3 to $7 million in budget cuts while maintaining smaller class sizes and expanding wraparound services. Many of these accomplishments were delivered during my rotation as president or vice president of the board. I'm honored to have the endorsement support of Supervisor Keith Carson, Mayor Eric Egin, the only candidate with a supermajority of the city council, current and former School Board Directors, the Berkeley Democratic Club, East Bay Young Democrats, Black Women Organized for Political Action, Moms Against Gun Violence, the Building Trades and Sheet Metal Unions, Evolve California, and more, which can be found at laurbabbitt.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Laura. So that was our opening statement session. We are going to move into the questions now. The questions were kind of collated by the League. We invite anyone who is listening and participating to enter their questions, if they have questions, into the Q&amp;A tab and then we, if we have time, we'll be able to offer up those questions to the candidates as well. So the first question is going to Laura. Go to all of you, but to Laura first. Since 2017, caregivers, the district, as well as other community members, have been working on improving Berkeley Unified School District provided childcare before and after school. And yet they remain long, weightless, and poor communication. Why do you think this remains a significant challenge? What practical role do you think the board can play in solving this problem? And what past experience would you bring to bear to resolve it? That's for you, Laura.
Yes, thank you so much for that question because it's definitely a priority that we really revamp our after-school and before-school care. We've had several task forces that have looked into this problem, but what we haven't had are district leaders since 2017 that's actually going to focus on those recommendations, drive those recommendations home, and make sure that they get implemented with success. In my next term, I'm definitely looking forward to addressing these challenges. Just so you know, staffing is a huge problem. One of the ways in which I've combated that is working with the California School Board Association and really advocating for funding because we've had after-school caregivers who could make more money literally working at In-N-Out Burger than they could in our, in our district. And so increasing that public funding has gone a long way, making sure that we are fully staffed and that we are fully prepared. We've done our due diligence in kind of changing some of our leadership in our after-school programs, changing our structures. And so now it's time to, to make sure that all of those efforts really pay off. I'm proud to say that since I was elected in 2020, of course, we spent the first couple of years with COVID and then re-entering COVID every year, our, our number of complaints and our number of issues have gone down. And right now, we are really facing an issue of timing, making sure parents can know ahead of time, you know, if they have a seat or not. We're also facing issues around transportation when they have to go to after-school programs off-site. And so I am in favor of, of really revamping our program so that every child at every school can actually stay at their school and have the care that they need after school. Also making sure that it is a part of the extended-day learning program so that we can reinforce some of our reading, our math, and extracurricular services that we know our whole child needs in order to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. And now Anna.
Yeah, thank you for this really important question. And so something that I think a lot of people don't know is that the school district has a two-by-two committee, which is comprised of two School Board Directors and two members of the city council. And this is an issue that we addressed at the last meeting and we will continue to address in the fall. We understand that this has been a huge problem and I think, you know, I thank my colleague Laura Babbitt for talking about transportation. She knows that I care about that topic very passionately. We have been cutting transportation services to a lot of our CBO partners also that offer after-school programming for our students. And so that has reduced, right, the accessibility of our families, particularly our most vulnerable families to those programs. So that's something that I will continue to fight for. I mean, it is a very difficult budget cycle, right? And so how do you do that in the midst of budget cuts, right? And so I think that's where it's really important to have someone like me on the board. I work in transportation. I oversee countywide transportation services to school districts and making sure that we're partnering with AC Transit so that the free transit passes are going to the students that need it the most so they can get to their after-school programs. I also think the conversations that we're having in the two-by-two committee and I invite members of the public to listen to those to make sure that we're partnering with our city, with our, you know, city offices, like, you know, with our Parks and Recs Department to make sure that our students have access to those programs, to make sure that we're expanding programs for students with disabilities because a lot of those are very limited and that we continue to work with our CBO partners, like the Berkeley Chess, Chess School is an example of, you know, a program that's been new and very, very well received in the community to offer, you know, chess programming at our different sites. And so making sure that we're working with our CBOs, with our city partners, and with our transit agencies on solving these transportation issues is really important. We need a multi-pronged approach. I'm a big fan of committees. I think it's really important to bring in some parent leaders, district staff, and city partners, and CBO partners so we can really expand the number of offerings for our families and start the planning now for the next school year because we know with budget cuts, it's going to be difficult.
Thank you, Anna. Next, Jen.
Thank you so much. I agree. This is a super important question. I, I was a working, I am a working mom and when my children were young, I depended on after-school childcare to be able, for our family to function. So I deeply understand the concerns that I'm hearing from many families across the city about the lack of availability of childcare, lack, after-school care, the lack of communication, the, the timelines that left people in a lurch so that when school started, they suddenly found out that they needed to scramble to find a childcare solution for after-school. I deeply understand the importance of all of these issues. I have been, and I've been talking to my friends and former colleagues who, who are working on this issue in the district. And I think I would echo a lot of what Director Babbitt and Director Vasudev have already said. I agree that funding is a really important issue. Our after-school staff are paid very poorly, so it's hard to recruit and retain people for those positions, which means that we can't offer robust programming. If we can't staff it, we can't offer it to children. So that's, that's one really important issue that we need to continue to work on. Second, as you said in your question, timelines and communication are issues that we need to work on from the district level. We need to commit that next summer, we're not going to be notifying parents a week before school starts that they don't have a place in an after-school program and leaving them to figure it out on their own. We can do better than that and I've spoken to the interim director of Extended Learning and he has committed to me that they will do better than that. And I also think, I, I also want to echo what Director Vasudev said about partnerships with the city and with private providers. I think there, there's, there are creative and diverse solutions to solving this problem that we need to explore. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Next is Norma.
So last, we're, we're made to accept that learning, education, and teaching pretty much goes on in some classroom formation. But from about the seventh month in the womb, the fetus is learning, learning, education, learning, education, teaching is constant for us all our lives, making us all teachers and students all our lives. These are natural for people, as natural as they are for lions and for forests and for skeins of mushrooms. All life teaches, all life, all the time. Nevertheless, the highly, the highly controlling profit system has established the indoctrination tool, school, attempting to take desirable human behavior out of our hands so that we can be made into the tool of their profiteering, their slave, actually. As Marx discovered for us, all profit is made from our labor. We work at one job or another, any job, and the benefit accrues ultimately to the teeny owning few, regardless, regardless of this and that regulation, rule, law touted as one to control that. I don't have to detail to you the many methods, rules, laws they have to steal our lives, our minds, in service to the profiteering great them. People might create a business that makes enough money to survive, even enjoy, even provide for their family, children. Meanwhile, of course, someone's in the kitchen taking care of that level of work. Someone's cleaning up around, doing the laundry, tending the yard, the garden, the family member who needs healthcare, the infant that needs.
Thank you, Norma. So we're going to move on to question number two now and Norma, you will be the first to answer. I will read the question. What is your understanding of the state of student safety and well-being across the district and what policies and programs can improve student health outcomes? That's to you, Norma.
There must be, there must stop being levels of work. All work equals all work. Stop the status of work alongside that. Stop the status of income alongside that. Contrive not to dole out wages at any level. End the gambling mechanism, investing. Just communities, just communally decide to do things or not to do a thing, depending. For example, lithium, another horror, worse than gold, worse than blood diamonds. Given AI and its demands on energy supply and its threat of erroneous control of what? Of us, of course, of our labor, of our lives. The school is the purveyor of the tautologies of submission to production for the benefit of our owners. It is the indoctrination site. If not for the content, which sometimes veers away from applauding white brutality, then for the form, the lineup to go in the building mentality. The cry when your folks leave you, they cry when their, when their folk leaves them at the care location, cry to no avail. They leave, the, the adult leaves to march in their own line, the long line drive or ride to their highly oppressive job, the wage slave job daily. And child must lick their emotional wounds and go along with it. There's no choice. Consider these, we're all geniuses. That too has been commodified, taken from a, stulted by the mind-control environment, 20 to 30 maybe or more same-age children.
You, Norma, thank you. Next is Anna. And if you need, if you guys need me to repeat the question, I am happy to.
No, I see it in the chat. So, thank you for putting it in the chat. You know, my understanding, right, is that we need to be more coordinated on how to solve safety issues. And I say this because after the shooting in Uvalde, as part of my work at the California Latino School Board Association, we connected with our counterparts in Texas, the Texas Latino School Board Association, the two largest affinity-based school board associations in the country to talk about this issue. And I was part of drafting a resolution, which I'm grateful to have passed in BUSD and to have funded the position of a district-wide safety coordinator to look holistically at our safety gaps and come up with a plan to address them. But in that process, right, it's a resolution that we passed two years ago that I drafted two years ago and passed, we have learned that coordination is fundamental to ensuring student safety. And so there's other neighboring counties like San Mateo County, for example, where their county office is really leading the way in making sure that safety is coordinated. They have a, what they call the Big Five, a program for outlining what to do in terms of shelter in place, securing campuses, evacuation, drop, cover, and hold, and lockdowns, right? And I think that that becomes very important because school districts can't do this on their own. We need to be partnering with law enforcement and talking to them. So I'm very proud of my work to start those conversations with Berkeley Police Department, with our Fire Department, with a group called Making Our Schools Safe. It's called MOS. It's a group of parent leaders that are really passionate about safety issues in our schools. And we have a district-wide safety committee that's doing the work. The committee is going to start convening in October again for this school year. But I think we need to think really strategically because those were some of the gaps that we saw in Uvalde. Those were some of the gaps that we saw in Sandy Hook, right? And I think unless law enforcement and district staff and administrators all speaking the same safety language when something goes wrong, it's going to be really hard to address these issues. So I think funding and positions are great and coordination with all of the agencies involved in addressing safety becomes very important so that we're successful. Thanks.
Thank you, Anna. Next is Jen.
Thanks, Janet. I really appreciate the framing of this question and the way that it links the idea of safety and wellness and student health outcomes. So I think that when we're talking about safety in this question, we're talking about more than kids' physical safety. We're also talking about their psychological safety. So when we think about their physical safety, safety, I think the things that Anna mentioned are all super important. We need really strong coordinate, coordination for disaster preparedness, for active shooter training. We need to make sure that things like the gates and cameras that have been installed are actually being used as intended. I was actually at a school site a week or two ago and there was a gate and a buzzer on, there was a buzzer and the gate was propped wide open so that anybody could walk in and out. So there's training that folks at our school sites need in order to use the tools that the, that the board has funded and supported to help them keep their schools safe. So all of that is super important for physical safety. But then this other piece around psychological safety and wellness is also tremendously important. I was meeting with our Youth and Government students last week and that was one of the questions that they asked me was, what are you going to do for student mental health? Because we all know that since COVID, there's been a dramatic rise in the mental health needs, particularly of our teenagers, but also of our younger children as well. So I think this is also a place where coordination is incredibly important. Schools can't resource and fund all of those mental health providers ourselves. We need to be working with the city, with public and private partners to help make sure that the needs of our students are being met. And we have to prioritize students' well-being and student safety because kids can't learn if they don't feel safe and they don't have, they don't have the mental health supports that they need to be able to participate in their classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen, and Laura.
Yes, thank you for that important question. I would agree, obviously, with my colleague, Director, I mean President Vasudev, primarily because we passed those resolutions and those positions together. And I also, when I first heard the word safety, I immediately started thinking about the, the varied forms of safeties. And so I will say I agree with what Principal Korn is saying around mental health, safety, and wellness. And we have done, in my opinion, a great job in addressing that as well, partnering with the city, really getting a well- really getting wellness centers in our classroom, in our school sites. At, uh, DTA has one now, um, Berkeley High School has one now, um, which is new since COVID and really looking at all of the ways in which, um, physical safety does require a buzzer and a camera. And working with our city, I was proud to be a part of our reimagining Police and Crime Prevention Gun Prevention Committee. Proud to have the endorsement of Moms Against Gun Violence because of my work in that area. But also very proud to say that I've written the hate motivated behavior policy uh, because we know that, uh, students can feel unsafe in their classroom, especially with racial isolation and a lot of the different bullying and harassment that happens. Proud to have written our, um, boundary policy so that we can make sure that students feel safe from sexual harm. And also proud to have expanded our sexual harm prevention programs with coordinators to really look at that, to have more Title IX investigators and to really keep restorative practices that work going and making sure that we have policies that are implemented well so that the framework for safety and success, whether it be physical, mental, emotional, is being addressed every day for every child.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, moving on to question three, and for this one, we're going to start with you, Anna. California is again facing a difficult fiscal environment and has had to make steep cuts and/or delay improvements to programs and services. Can you share your philosophy and approach to working with colleagues to make important budgetary decisions?
Yeah, thank you so much. That question is super important right now, given, you know, the climate that we were in last budget cycle and the climate that we're walking into with this upcoming budget cycle. I think, you know, in terms of working with my colleagues, um, like Director Babett, think the board has been very clear in articulating that equity is a priority for us and making sure that we're not cutting from services that target our vulnerable student population. So I'm really proud of the board for articulating those values and for making sure that that's guiding our budgeting, you know, decision-making. Think for me, right, and for my colleagues, the opinion of the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee becomes important at that, at that time because that's a committee that's made up of education partners, right? It's made up of, uh, not only labor leaders, educators from the classroom, parent leaders from representing our different diverse committees, uh, district staff, right, and staff from the central office, and board members. And so under, you know, making sure that we're understanding the priorities, particularly of some of our smaller committees, like the D-LAC Committee, right? Um, the PNO Committee is important as we're making budgeting decisions for Berkeley, right? Like, what does it mean to cut, to cut or free certain positions? And what that, what does that, uh, you know, look like in the classroom? So I think, you know, through that process, I've been very proud of the district for being honest and upfront that we don't want to cut from the classroom directly and that we have priorities, right? Like, our literacy work is very important. So I, for me, not cutting from things that we've already articulated as a priority, that's a priority as part of the superintendent's evaluation, think is very important that we hold the line when we say that something is a priority, that we're going to fund that. Um, you know, that we're not cutting from special education. Special education already is incredibly underfunded in the state of California. And so that when we're looking at budget cuts, we're not cutting from the students that are most vulnerable. So I think that, you know, as we are looking at budget cuts this, this year too, I'm, I've been very supportive of strategic plan so that, again, we articulate those values and the, and hold the line when we're making those tough decisions and evaluating programs.
Thank you very much, Anna. Next is Jen.
Thanks so much. Um, this is definitely a really important question. Um, we are going to be facing some very difficult fiscal decisions in the next year with the end of COVID funding and declining enrollment. All of those translate into fewer dollars that we have to spend in our school district, and we will have some really challenging decisions to make. Um, I very much agree with what Anna is describing around, but long before the budget season, I think we need to be engaging stakeholders in getting really clear on what our priorities are and what our values are so that when it comes time to make those budget decisions, we've had those conversations and we've come to agreement on what's most important to us. And I share those values around prioritizing equity and keeping cuts away from the classroom as much as possible. Um, I will say, as an outsider to the board who has not yet been elected to the school board, um, it's interesting to hear the description of the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee and the board's commitments around budgeting. Because as an outsider, I have found it actually challenging to find a lot of information around how the budget is being approached. And I've, in talking to constituents, heard a desire for greater transparency and greater communication to the wider public. So I would love to see all those members of the Superintendent's Budget Advisory Committee going out and meeting with different groups of stakeholders at school sites and in their communities, again, long before budgeting season, to talk with people about what they value and what they prioritize so that all of those voices get heard in that, um, in that process. Um, so that it's not just this small group of people holding the information, but that the information is really widely shared and understood. Because I think these budget cuts are going to be a surprise to some people, and we want to help them understand what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Norma.
So what I was talking about, the stultification of genius, one way is to sit a person down with twenty, thirty other people that they're same age. Everybody is made a, uh, an individual controlled by the classroom. And that they're gathered together to look and behave the same, submissive to the rule of the institution. And then on top of that, we're graded. What a constant slap in the face, grading me, grading me, grading anybody, grading the child sits next to me or the student that sits next to me. Taught, uh, graded and told that we have opportunities. Opportunity fits the capitalist form. Compete for the opportunity to whatever. And when you don't succeed at it, you failed to achieve, though given the opportunity. Competition is foundational to capitalism. And yes, those few locations that have survived the imperialist, the capitalist onslaught have only fared better in the people's minds. I mentioned to you USSR, Cuba, Venezuela. They survive mentally. Materially, they've been cut down by the actions of the Imperium, which denies them the opportunity to continue their actions to provide for all of themselves equally. Communism is taught as a hated objective, hated and feared from the cradle to the, forever, for the rest of their lives.
Thank, thank you, Norma. Uh, Laura.
Yes, thank you so much for this question because what we've done in Berkeley Unified is to really establish pillars for our budgeting priorities around equity, transparency, what drives excellence, what drives engagement, sustainability, and stability to our budgeting process. And so this approach ensures that we make our decisions, uh, based on our actual data and that we're responding to the results of our academic performance instead of just responding to major advocacy movements or what some people like to call the loudest voices in the rooms. And so our Superintendent Budget Advisory Committee is a committee that I was a part of for many years before I joined the board. We now have, it's comprised of our union leaders, it's comprised of our parent leaders. Um, it plays a crucial role in deciding, helping to decide those priorities. And you can see all of those move, all of those meetings on, uh, on YouTube for the transparency sake. And so during our last three to eight million dollars in budget cut seasons, uh, really partnering and collaborating, listening to everyone, getting all of our stakeholders together and making sure that we kept our priorities aligned with our values and our, and our mission has been important. And so as the only, uh, controller of global operations or financial expert on the board, uh, this is where I've thrived to make sure that we align every dollar with our district's vision. I like to call it outcome-oriented budgeting, um, making sure that we have accountability structures in place so that we're clear on everyone's roles and responsibilities. And I look forward to making improvements such as bringing in-house legal counsel on board to drive cost savings and really using, um, technology to eliminate some redundancies and make sure that we can create effective structures that we can evaluate and make sure that we know exactly where our money is going and that it's driving the results we want it to drive. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I will move on to the next question, and Laura, you'll be the first up on that one.
Okay.
What progress has been made to improve student literacy in the district? And what do you believe should be prioritized to continue this positive trajectory?
Well, I love this question because, um, since 2015, we've been working to try and rid ourselves of this, uh, defunct curriculum, uh, which even the University of Columbia and the person who wrote the curriculum, Lucy Cockins, has, um, disassociated themselves with at this point. Um, and so it was really one of the main, major reasons why I also decided to run for school board because reading is a silver right. And if we're going to continue to hold on to curriculums that we know aren't working and that we know that many children are only reading because of the supplemental fundings that their parents are putting in place or that they have the time and expertise themselves to implement at home, that is a problem. And so what we're doing, we're on track to change our curriculum by spring of next year, which is, uh, monumental after all of these years. Uh, we have a lot of work to do in our middle school program as well. Um, and my personal involvement has been really partnering with an organization called Reading for Berkeley, really partnering with our parents from well before Reading for Berkeley even was established, um, who were talking about dyslexia and making sure that we put those screenings and those, uh, assessments in place so that educators can know exactly where their children are, how to move them, so that we're shifting from, um, practices which really harm a child's self-esteem to practices which are really do, um, revolve around a growth mindset and that you can achieve. Where are you? How do you get these letter sounds? And how do you implement, um, reading so that, uh, you can be in the information age and have access to information? And I've gone to, um, Sacramento to fight for these assessments to not only just be in Berkeley, but for these assessments to go statewide because we know this is a statewide crisis with our reading rates in California. Um, and I'm proud of this work that we've achieved together.
Thank you, Laura. Uh, Jen, you're up next.
Great. Um, this is an issue that's also really close to my heart. Um, I, you know, I'm a former teacher and principal and literacy coach. And, um, you know, when I first came to Berkeley in 2005 as a teacher, I was a first grade teacher, which is, of course, the most important grade for learning to read. And I walked into my Berkeley classroom and said, what's our reading curriculum? And somebody pointed to a closet down the hall full of books and basically said, eh, you'll figure it out. So that was pretty shocking. I see that on your face. Um, I was shocked as a teacher. Um, so, you know, a few years later, when I was a literacy coach, I helped to roll out a coherent, aligned, district-wide approach to teaching reading. And at the time, it was the gold standard. And to Director Babett's point, it has now been, um, it is no longer the gold standard. It is now, um, we now know a lot more about what's happening in kids' brains when they're learning to read and what kind of phonics instruction they need in order to help them, um, develop, develop early literacy. So it's time for a change. Um, I'm really excited about the curricula that are being piloted this year and the fact that the board will this spring, um, get to adopt a new literacy curriculum. And I know from my experience fifteen years ago, rolling out this existing curriculum, that bringing every Berkeley elementary teacher along to teach the same curriculum in their classroom is no small feat. It's going to require a huge amount of training and support and accountability and coaching for our teachers. Um, and I'm really eager to bring that experience to this project and to be able to, you know, ask the right questions of our district leadership to ensure that the curriculum that we adopt actually gets implemented really well because that's what our kids need and deserve.
Thank you, Jen. Norma.
Um, do you remember being read to in the classroom by their first, second, third, maybe even fourth grade teacher? For me, that was the warmest experience I had in the classroom. I had the, uh, situation where I used to get upper respiratory infections when I was little, which is quite common, uh, three years old and so, and my mother would read to me. I think she might have read Little Red Riding to me, Little Red Riding Hood to me about a dozen times. And eventually I became able to read it and not only read it, but transfer the ability to read over to anything. I became able to read any words and, uh, just naturally use, oh, the, the word escapes me, I'm getting to that stage, uh, when you break down the word to pronounce it right and stuff like that. I just did it. And I was reading when I was four. And I was reading in school, I used to sit in a classroom and I'd have one piece of material in front of me and then the required reading material. And so we'd get to a point in the required reading material together and the, the teacher would call on me and I would have the last words in my mind and I would be able to look at the book and go, okay, then I'd be able to read in the right place where I would long past the reading content because, and I was reading something else altogether. The, uh, the idea of, the idea of special ed is so offensive to me. We create a problem so that we can have to teach it, so we.
Thank you, Norma. Um, Anna, your thoughts?
Thank you, Janet, for this question. You know, I come at this as a school board director who cares passionately about making sure that we're doing the right thing in our literacy adoption process. And also as a mom of children with special education needs and one of which who had, you know, literacy issues. And so, you know, for a long time before I was elected to the board, you know, was working with our special education families on this topic. What, you know, I think has been made to improve literacy in the district, and I think my colleague, Director Babett, alluded to some of the things that the board has done. And as board president, I have helped agendize, uh, you know, regular updates on our literacy curriculum adoption process. And that becomes very important because publicly, we're discussing all the steps. Adopting new curriculum is very challenging for a district. For a lot of the issues that, you know, Jen Corn touched upon, like the professional development that has to take place, the buy-in from educators, the buy-in from the public, right? The investments from the board, back to, you know, being in a difficult budget cycle and making sure this continues to be a priority and that we're holding the line. Um, you know, when we, uh, rolled out DIBELS, which stands for Dynamic Indicators of, uh, Basic Early Literacy, Early Literacy Skills, it's a new test, right, to help make sure that we're looking at how our students were doing. We had to make sure we rolled out the professional development for that, right? So that when teachers were sharing their, their students' DIBELS scores, they were able to explain to the parents what that meant, right? And so there's a lot of things that we're doing that are new, like introducing DIBELS, having listening sessions with our families around the curriculum adoption process, which I think is very important, and I'm proud of the district staff's work to do that. Uh, making sure that we're, the Board of Education is having regular updates and asking the hard questions and grateful to my colleague, uh, Director Babett, for being in that fight and being part of that process and also increasing the amount of professional development. You know, I'm excited that we're piloting new curriculum and I look forward to continuing to agendize those regular updates so that the public knows transparently what we're doing. And I think, you know, we're trying different things, but you, change takes time. And so I think it's going to be a while before we start, we, before we see the fruits of our labor. But, you know, we're trying.
Thank you, Anna. We'll move on to the next question, and Jen, you'll be first on this one. The gap between white students and their Latino, Black, and Asian classmates was recently reported to be among the widest in the country. What are the root causes of this problem? What is the district doing correctly to address this longstanding issue? And what evidence-based solutions would you support if elected or re-elected to the school board?
Softball question. Um, just joking, that's not at all a softball question. That is, um, the core question that Berkeley Unified faces and has faced as long as I've been a parent and an educator in this district. Um, it is critical that we improve the outcomes. It is critical that we improve outcomes for our Black and Brown students, for our students who are learning English and our students with disabilities. The root causes are complex. Improving educational outcomes for kids involves improving curriculum and instruction. So the work we're doing around literacy is a huge part of addressing those gaps. But it's not enough by itself. We also need to improve the culture in our schools. That, that means we need to create. Communities where every kid feels like they belong, where every kid feels seen by their teacher. Where teachers are implementing anti-racist practices. So that they're, they are communicating to every child in their class that they believe in. And that they know that that child can excel. Also. Kids need to see teachers who look like them. There's lots of research that shows that when our Black and Brown children are taught by Black and Brown teachers, that they have better outcomes. So hiring is part of it, transforming culture, which. Professional development is part of that. So we need to, we need to be training our teachers to be able to implement. Anti-racist practices in their classrooms. And then our curriculum and instruction, all of that woven together. Is that sort of the complex puzzle of how we need, of how we are gonna continue to close that gap. Which is critically important and at the core of our work as, as a school district and as a school board.
Thank you, Jen. Laura, you're next.
Well, thank you for this question because it's part of why I became an advocate for equity all those years ago. In Berkeley Unified School District, I was at a PTA meeting. And the principal was showing this achievement or opportunity to get data. And I was just horrified. I just couldn't believe that in Berkeley Unified, these were the chances that my children had. And that children that look like my children were really, were going to experience based on the years of data. And the principals, I said, well, how could this be? And the white principal just flat out told me, Laura, this is racism. And we have seen that two little white boys playing, tussling in a classroom is boys being boys. Two little black kids is violence. We have a special education plan because we are over identifying our Black kids particularly for special education services. And it says the root cause is around the lack of political will. To actually address the racism, or if you want to say it nicely, the implicit bias that actually exists in our schools. We know the formula. The formula is high expectations, yet the bar is constantly being lowered. And the excuse is constantly being made that it's for the Black or Brown kids. And we know that our kids are brilliant and they can achieve and they have been achieving. I'm proud that the work that we have been doing, as I said in my opening statement, has been growing to close the achievement gap. But it really took saying, I will not stand for a lack of political will. And I will not stand for racism being the reason that we continue to contribute to the pipeline for prison. In, to prison in Berkeley Unified School District.
Thank you, Laura. Anna.
Yeah, thank you for this not so very softball question. You know, I will say I echo a lot of the things that, that have been stated already, you know. I think when, when I ran for office the first time, I had a listening session with parents of multilingual learners, right? These are parents who don't speak English. Their children are coming into our schools without speaking English and I wanted to learn. It was a listening session in Spanish, so the majority of the parents spoke Spanish. I wanted to learn, what, what would you like to be able to support the academic success of your students? Because we know ELs, and when we look at the opportunity gap, they have some of the most concerning data in our district. And they said, I, I want to make sure our child has a high-quality programming in this district, access to that. I want to make sure that my child has access to tutoring programs after school. I want to make sure that the teacher sees me, right? And that, that. Part of that, you know, is making sure that we have culturally responsive services to bridge that gap when there's a language barrier or a cultural barrier, right? So I think family engagement becomes very important, making sure you have those wraparound services. Because you know, your teacher's not a magician, your teacher doesn't speak a million different languages. But making sure that the district provides those wraparound services for culturally responsive engagement with our families is very important. I will say, you know, as a root cause. It's really important, not only that we have high-quality programming, but that as a district, we're evaluating this programming, right? So when we make investments in different programs, we have to look at the data. And we have to make those tough decisions. What's working, what's moving the needle and what's not? And I think. Being able to do that as a district becomes very important, especially when you're facing different budgetary challenges. I think also fully funding special education because the opportunity gap, as Director Babett alluded. Like our students are dual-identified. You can be a Latino student and be on special education student. You could be an EL and have special education needs. You can be a Black student and have special education needs. So making sure that we're also funding those wraparound services for children that are dual-identified becomes very important. And I, you know, I think investing in culturally responsive curriculum and instruction.
Thank you very much, Anna. Norma.
Thankings. You notice that teaching is done. By segregated behavior. You segregate the history from the science, from the music, from the art, from the gym time or recess time. And they're not separate. Those are things that are, that are, need to be integrative. We live, we need to live integrated and by integrated, I mean age-integrated as well. So people, you know, this, this. One person I know, it was recent. Talked about having gone with their uncle or so forth. To take care of a horse that was ill. They were on a farm and. So the, the child was there. For cutting the horse open and fixing it. And later became a surgeon. These things belong to us and they're taken away from us. You have to be part of a block of permitted activity. Instead of being a part of. Everybody takes care of this. Everybody takes care of it. Everybody cooks. Everybody fixes a stairway. Everybody to get, without the age segregation that goes on, that separates unnecessarily. And those opportunities, if he, if the child is fixing a stair, they're going to measure the board, they're going to measure the distance. They're going to talk about being able to deal with the situation. All those activities are part of learning and they need to be respected as such and part of teaching. The child is also teaching the person that's with them, the carpenter. About thinking about being able to talk about it with somebody else. The integrated living together is an altogether.
Thank you, Norma. So I think it's about almost seven thirty, so I think we will have one final question. This next, and then we will go to closing statements. The next question, Norma, you will be first up on. At a past budgetary oversight committee meeting, some teachers expressed opposition to how the school board chose to invest funds. For the African-American success framework. Can you give us, give us an example of how you have navigated a disagreement between teachers? And what the school board has decided is in the best interest of the students? That was a disagreement between teachers and what the school board has decided in the best interest of students. And Norma, you are first up on this question.
Okay, I'm dealing with school board everywhere being the static. Perpetuator, perpetuator of the system, the way it stands. So I'm looking at the idea. Children go, are offered to use empty milk cartons to make. Structures that look like a city. Here's the city hall. Here's the home that somebody lives in. So, no, get them out, let them go out and live among the things that people do together. With. I won't call it guidance, with, with, with another person who has been doing this. Who can be the person that says, watch out, don't step in front of the car. The idea of doing the activities within the community. To respect themselves. It, it, what it needs is to change the idea of how work is done. With the work with the eight-hour-a-day job that takes the adults. Out of the community so that they cannot have that kind of a relationship with children. We don't support the activities and we don't have any intention of doing that. We, we, you're looking for pay for maintaining the status quo. Instead of letting people get together and do the work of being together. Being in the park and talking about what they see together and asking questions and. The child pointing to the butterfly and the adult having to go look it up to find out what it is. The idea of, you know, agency for the four-year-old or the twenty-year-old. Is such a scarce. Kind of experience.
Thank you, Norma. We'll now move on to Laura.
Yes, well, thank you for this question because really our job as a school board member is to, to listen, hear, collaborate. And to really use the data to drive those fundamental ending decisions. And so with the African-American success framework. If year after year after year, we've made no progress. Then we must need to bring in some expert help. I don't know any organization that would continue to do the same thing and get different results and think they're going to get different results. And so that was what drove the need for the African-American success framework. And we also did listen to all of our partners and there may have been teachers in that one meeting who didn't support it. But certainly there are teachers all over BUSD who have been getting that hands-on. Cultural competency training, modeling of how you work interactively with African-American students that. Are saying something completely different. We cannot function if you take them out of our district right now. We still need their help. My daughter's. Second grade teacher actually taught an intensive with the African-American summer success framework. Last summer. And she had been an educator for over thirty years and she said this was the first time she ever had an intensive, hands-on. Understanding of what it looked like to actually work with Black children and to drive the needle. So we do a lot of this six days of professional development, you know, bullet point presentations. But really making sure that we have those intensive modeling, those intensive coaching. Where they can ask questions, where educators can feel like they're in a safe space. That's part of what the African-American success framework was about. If we're going to drive A through G rates and our staff is constantly, when, when I started, nineteen out of a hundred and ninety-two Black children. Were graduating eligible to apply. Now we're at over sixty percent. That's a huge difference.
Thank you, Laura. Jen.
Yeah, thank you for this question. So an example of how you've navigated a disagreement between teachers and the school board. When I was the principal at Thousand Oaks. I found myself smack in the middle of a disagreement between my teachers and the school board. The, and it was over the bilingual program at Thousand Oaks, which when I was principal there. The Thousand Oaks had the oldest bilingual program in the city of Berkeley. It was beloved. I was hired for Thousand Oaks specifically because of my experience as a bilingual teacher and because they wanted a Spanish-speaking principal. Who could serve the Latino community at Thousand Oaks and I was very proud to play that role. And during my tenure as principal, the school board decided that. The bilingual program was no longer fiscally sustainable. And that it needed to be phased out. And you can imagine that my community and my teachers were very upset by that decision. It was a little different than being a school board member because I was not the decision maker. But I was a person with some power in that school, in that I was the principal. And the way I navigated that was by doing a lot of listening. A lot of really validating people's feelings about this really difficult change that was coming. And then over time, building enough relationship and empathy and listening together. That we were able to start to collectively move our, move our attention to the future. And we were able to start thinking about how we were going to reinvent our school. For its next, for its next phase as the bilingual program closed down. But that takes a lot of time and it takes a lot of relationship and it takes a lot of listening. To build the trust to be able to move together through conflict in that way.
Thank you, Jen.
What kind of program? I'm missing the words.
Bilingual program.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, okay.
Thank you. And Anna.
Yeah, thanks for this question. I think this is real, you know, these kinds of scenarios are where you kind of flex your, your chops as a consensus builder. And you know what it means to work in partnership, right? I think it's very important that when you have these difficult conversations, and they come up a lot when you're a school board member, it's part of the job to have difficult conversations, right? That you find your common values and that you root those conversations in that, right? So in this case, the common value is that we do want to close the opportunity gap for our Black students. As, you know, the example that Jen mentioned, closing the opportunity gap for our multilingual learners, very important, right? And there's been times, right, you know, as a board member, I'll, I'll attend a conference, I'll get really excited about something and want to do something and then I come back and I say, hey. I got this great idea and I want to do it. And you get pushback, right? You get pushback from educators, you get pushback from district staff. But I think as part of that pushback, it's having a bit of humility as a school board member that you're not the educator, right? You're making decisions and driving a strategic vision for the district and setting policies and priorities. But that having that relationship where you understand, all right, we might have different ways. Of meeting these mutual goals, but what's the win-win, right? I think that's really important when you're doing this line of work. And we, you know, there's times when you're going to push hard as a board member and that's fine. But you better be rooted in data as you do that, right? Coming back, coming to those conversations with like, this is the best practice and this is why I think becomes very important. And I think also like, there's stuff that I don't, you know, I don't know what I don't know, right? Like I'm not a classroom teacher. And so having that humility to say, help me understand your perspective. But going back, right, to your mutual goals, I think is really important. It defuses attention. It brings you together in partnership to make decisions. It anchors you in your students, right? What I always tell people is like, that's our customer, that's our client. That's what, I say that at the beginning of many board meetings. We're doing this for our students. And so I have to be able to sleep at night when I make a decision and the, you know, the top. Thing for me when I vote is how is this helping our students? Is my vote helping our students have access to quality education?
Thank you, Anna. So before the candidates give their closing statements, I just have a few remarks on behalf of LWV, Berkeley, Albany and Emerydale. First, thank you to the candidates who are running and thank you for participating in this forum. Your answers were thoughtful, comprehensive, and I for one learned a lot and I'm sure our audience did too. I'd also like to thank the audience for engaging in our democracy. For further information about upcoming forums, the candidates, the pros and cons of the ten statewide ballot initiatives. And positions on ballot measures, please visit the League's website, lvvbae.org or vote411.org. We invite you to join the League to help us engage voters and defend democracy. We do so much more than voter registration and education. Visit our website and social media accounts. It wouldn't be a League event unless we told you a little bit about upcoming dates for the election. The last day to register to vote is October twenty-first this year. You can register and vote on election day, though you will just be voting provisionally. You can register to vote, register to vote online at the Secretary, Secretary of State's website, which is sos.ca.gov. All California active registered voters will receive a vote-by-mail ballot for the November fifth election. Ballots are starting to be mailed October seventh. Vote-by-mail ballots can be returned by mail at a drop-off location or at your county elections office. Ballot drop-off locations open on October the eighth, the day after the ballots get, get mailed. Since Alameda County is a voter's choice county, vote centers will be open for early in-person voting beginning on October twenty-sixth. Vote-by-mail ballots must be postmarked on or before election day and received by November twelfth. Please visit vote411.org, the League's nonpartisan electronic voter portal with everything you need to know about the upcoming election. And how to cast an informed ballot. Again, that's vote411, the numbers four one one dot org. Now the candidates will make closing statements. We reverse the order of the opening statements. Each candidate will have a closing statement of one minute and we will start with you, Laura.
Hey, great. Thank you so much. Um, so in closing, I just want everyone to know that I'm seeking reelection because it really does take collaborative, equity-driven leadership to address Berkeley Unified's challenges. I've consistently challenged the status quo and pushed for the needs of our underserved students to be met over political ease. Before joining the board, I spent ten years as a dedicated parent advocate, serving on all our major committees, including our Parcel Tax Committee, Parent Advisory Committee, helping to write our strategic plan, among other roles. This extensive involvement gave me a deep understanding of where our district's strengths and areas of improvement were. I was empowered to drive significant progress in less than four years, even amid the challenges of COVID-nineteen. Finally, I'm the only board member that brings over thirty years of progressive experience in finance, accounting and operations management. We have principals on our staff, teachers, lawyers, professors and politicians already on our board. But without strong fiscal accountability, we've seen school districts crumble and our kids pay the price. Given the continued spending budget crisis for public schools, I was convinced that now is the time for me to serve another
Thank you, Laura. Time is up, over. Thank you. Anna, you're next.
Thank you. I'm proud of the work that I've done these last four years and the work that I continue to lead as school board president. And I believe that there's more work to be done to close the opportunity gaps for our black, brown students and our students with disabilities. During my second term on the board, my goal is to continue to work collaboratively with our families, staff and educators to prioritize investments for programs we know are working for our students. I'd like to focus on our, on completing our strategic plan and ensuring that we're transparent about how we evaluate the effectiveness of our programs, particularly given the budgetary situation that we find ourselves in. I'm proud to be supported by the Alameda County Democratic Party, the Berkeley Federation of Teachers, the Berkeley Council of Classified Employees, State Superintendent of Public Instruction Tony Thurmond and many Berkeley leaders, and I hope to earn your support as well. You can visit my website, vasudioforberkeley, should pronounce vasudev, vasudevforberkeley.com to learn more about me and about my many endorsements. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Jen.
Thank you so much. Um, in closing, I am very eager to bring my many years of experience as an educator, a teacher, a principal, and also as a parent to this role as a member of the Berkeley School Board. Um, my priorities are equity, belonging and stability for our school district. Um, and again, I am also very proud to be endorsed by a wide range of community leaders across our state, our city. Um, I've been endorsed, I've also been endorsed by the Berkeley Federation of Teachers and the Berkeley Council of Classified Employees as well as the local Democratic Party. I've been endorsed by State Superintendent of Public Instruction Tony Thurmond. I'm also very grateful to have been endorsed by our mayor, by Jenny Wong, our city auditor, by seven out of eight of our, um, city council members. I've been endorsed by several current and former school board directors. Um, I would be very eager to serve on the school board and you can visit jenhorn.org to find out more about me. Thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you, Jen. And finally, Norma.
While this discussion needs to take place, the direction that's necessary is to decolonize. We're colonized, you know that, by our owners. We're required to go through school, so many grades in a such-and-such formation, get diplomas, degrees. Those requirements need to evaporate. They all are functions of the judging society. Everyone then succeeds. There is no opportunity, just doing together wherever for our own benefit and enjoyment, which is an ideal left out, uh, often left out. The idea of enjoying life gets set aside for the idea to achieve and make some money. In this day of plague and destruction of earth and removal altogether of justice, given Trump's packed courts and people murdering masses of people because they're bored and otherwise angry and have learned from their historical environment that killing a lot of people
Thank you, Norma. Thank you very much. Um, and thanks to all of you for an insightful forum. Hats off to you guys. One final comment, uh, there will be five candidates listed on your November ballot for this position. Um, Abder Sichter is a candidate for this office, but unfortunately he was not able to attend this forum. So thank you all again. I really enjoyed it. We have some very good candidates for these positions. Uh, audience, I hope you enjoyed it as much as I did. Thank you so much and remember to vote. Take good care.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Did Abder tell you anything? Janet, did Abder tell you anything?